We're going to get started. Jeff, you hit record. All right, welcome Woodbury to your village board meeting of April 11, 2024. Just before we begin, I understand the importance of faith in the lives of my residents. It's an important factor to me. Over the last two weeks, our community has lost two shepherds that led their flocks. First was Pastor Kevin Allen of Highland Mills Central Valley Methodist Church and Father Michael Keane of St. Anastasia Parish. During the homily at the funeral mass for Father Michael Keane, the priests were told the story of someone offering their condolences for the loss of their priests. The person responded, "I didn't lose a priest, I lost a friend." I can say this is the greatest compliment for both men. They weren't just leaders of their respective parishes, but friends to all. So I ask everyone to please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for Pastor Kevin Allen and Father Michael Keane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its protocol for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So I will begin like I always do by introducing your village board. At the far end is trustee Jim Fryband. Next to him is trustee Vic Forelli. Next to him is trustee Susan Suriello. Next to her is trustee Matt Fabro. Next to him is village clerk Jessica McLennan, and I am your mayor Andrew Jacob Mazza. We're going to jump right in with public hearings for introductory local law two of 2024, right of entry. Public hearing is being continued to entertain public comments on introductory local law two of 2024, right of entry. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on March 7, 2024. So initially, I was going to go out to attorney Norton for a brief synopsis again, but I don't think it's necessary tonight. So I will go out to the public if anybody wishes to speak on introductory local law two of 2024. Going once. Going twice. Anybody looking to speak on introductory local law two of 2024? All right, can I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, since the since the local law was not on the desk of the trustees for more than seven days, this will have to be carried over to our April 25 meeting. So that puts that to bed for now. All right, fiscal year 2024, 2025 preliminary budget. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on fiscal year 2024, 2025 preliminary budget. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on April 1st? Fourth, excuse me. All right, so let's begin by going out to the public for comments on fiscal year 2024, 2025 preliminary budget. Anyone wishing to speak in the back row? Next row?
Good evening, my name's Tyler Retsel, I live in Central Valley. I see the budget is up.
Is the mic on?
It's green, can you hear me now? Is that better?
Let me pick the mic up, it doesn't work sometimes.
All right. I see the budget is up 10% this year, and that's after 18% last year and 14% the year before. I think that's quite a lot, and so I looked at the budget and I saw a few issues. There's nothing in the budget for chips, can you explain that?
There's nothing in the budget for chips?
It's usually $200,000 a year, and it's blank, so there's no income on the revenue side for chips.
That's right.
Certainly, we don't recognize it until it's received, so the A3501 shows zero, and it has a matching expense of A5112.400, which shows zero. Once that money comes in, because we need to recognize it to the penny per the state comptroller, once that money comes in, we recognize it and then expense at the same time.
Okay, thank you. The next is the, I see, the fire trucks and the chiefs' cars in the last two years comes to $1.8 million. I was wondering why that wasn't bonded?
Wow, that's interesting, because that's the same question one of the trustees asked. There was no reason to bond at the time, we had the money for the initial down payment. It's saved in our truck fund for that, so we pulled it out of there. The truck was due to be, we ordered the truck in February of 2023, it was supposed to take three years, it did not take three years, it actually should be ready by the end of this year, which means that we have two less budget cycles, where $150,000 per budget cycle was not added to that truck fund, so it's here early. I can't now rebudget something that's already been paid for in half, so I can't bond for half the payment.
You can bond for the two chief's cars.
Why would I bond for, what's the total of the chief's cars?
$170,000 you have adjusted.
Yeah, why would I do that? If I'm going to then pay, so I'm going to bond and then I'm going to wind up paying interest on that when I don't have to. So it doesn't make any sense, I'm going to be adding additional costs to the taxpayers of Woodbury for bonding.
Well, you're jumping the budget up and you're adding tax burden to them, and I'm sure the tax rate's not going to come down next year either.
Why do you say that? You started zero when you do the tax, when we do the taxes. Now, we haven't raised, I know you campaigned on this, but Desiree, did we raise taxes 30% in my two years, first two years as mayor?
Yes.
Not, no, you did not. If you look at your tax bill, the tax bill shows a percentage increase, but that's what the county calculates based on the previous year, they don't take into account the total assessed value of the village changing. So if you actually do the math, it is not that much, and if you take the entire, you have to take the entire budget into consideration, not just an individual line item, and your whole budget, if you take into consideration over last year, is up this year about eight and change percent.
If you take the money that you pay in taxes compared to the previous year, that's what it is, and that's, you can, to me, that's the number that you have to look at.
I mean, it's math, you can look at it many ways.
The other thing I was wondering is if you have put money into New York class?
Money into?
The money that you generate from taxes, and if you have it in New York class, which is
We do have it in New York class.
We do not have it in New York class, we negotiated a comparable rate with our existing bank, which we reduce administrative costs to manage the New York class. So our existing bank rates matched what New York class was offering. Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going once. Going twice. All right, can I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion and a second to? Turn the page. On a long, lonesome highway. All right, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget and direct the village clerk to print a copy of the budget in minutes of this meeting?
Motion.
Question? The salaries listed on the front page, cover page, and the second page of our budget do not match. 8,400 for the trustees on the first page and 8,000 on the cover page.
That is a typo on my part, I do apologize, however, it is the amount that was published in the newspaper, which was 8,000, that you all agreed on. And it is in the budget, if you look on the line item, it does count for the actual amount that you agreed upon, which was 32,000, which is eight times four.
I recall, I just wanted to point out the typo.
Yep, I appreciate you letting me know, and I will correct it.
All right, I have a motion and a second, village clerk? Go ahead.
Excuse me for one second, I'm sorry, could you pull the microphone down and speak into it? Thank you.
Back there? There, good. I was saying I have expressed my concern that the village does not engage with capital budgeting, which is a basic, the basic fiscal approach for governments. That is, when you have an asset that has an extended life, like a well, like fire trucks, like vehicles, the typical way to do this, the normal way to do this is to bond that so that the cost of that particular capital item is spread across the period of years of its beneficial use. That's not the way we do it here, we've been upfronting these costs, and that, the total value of those costs that we're talking about easily exceeds the excess that's necessary to basically pass a budget that's above the state tax cap. So I am, again, suggesting that this be the approach we take when we actually adopt the budget and make changes accordingly.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a motion and a second, village clerk McLennan, will you do a roll call, please?
Trustee Forelli? Trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Mayor Jacob Mazza?
Aye. All righty, moving on to administrative business. Can I have a motion and a second to accept receipt of the minutes for the meeting held on March 14, 2024?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on March 19, the village board of trustees held a budget work session. So, can I have a motion and a second to accept receipt of the minutes held on March 19 for the budget work session?
A motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, village clerk McLennan?
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, go ahead, we'll go back to it. No, it's me, it's me.
I didn't mean to point it out like that.
No, it's good.
Under new business, you have authorized the mayor to sign Rushmore Estates Consent Order Number Three. Forgive me, I didn't have time today to go into the site to review it. What is consent order number three?
Okay, so this is for the Rushmore Estates, okay? They are needing a sort of like a bridge agreement as they continue to move through the planning board process, they are really near the finish line there, so we are giving them, or I'm looking to give them, another consent agreement for additional events. We've done two in the past for them. Anyone else on public comment on agenda items? Okay. Village clerk McLennan, back to you, will you please read abstract 19?
Abstract 19 contains vouchers 23242307 through 23242398, and totals $288,035.90.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve abstract 19 as read?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Comments?
Sure.
In going through the individual invoice or voucher, I noticed that a number of these are being submitted not by the department heads, and I believe that is a requirement. I'd like to know that, in fact, someone other than a clerk or secretary has looked at the amounts that are being charged and to ensure that the department heads are aware of that charge.
Do you have a specific example that I can address for you?
Are you a department head?
I am a department head, yes, I'm the village treasurer.
Doesn't it require the department head's signature on each voucher?
It does not, no, the procurement policy dictates who has the authority to purchase for each department, and in the procurement policy, like for example, for Mickey's department, it lists Mickey, Jason, and Beth, for Rob's department, it lists Rob, Bill Waznisky, did I say that right, Waznick, and Sheila Beadle, for the fire department, it lists the three fire chiefs and me as their secretary, for the village board, it's the mayor and Jessica and myself.
Again, the form and the purpose of having the department head sign it is for them to know exactly what's being submitted to the board for approval and purchase.
That is an opinion, yes.
Their signature is what I would like to see on the abstract.
That is an opinion, yes.
Will take it under consideration. Okay, I've got a motion and a second for abstract 19, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, village clerk McLennan, now you can read abstract 20.
Abstract 20 contains vouchers 23242399 through 23242483, and totals $223,436.04.
Now, can I have a motion and a second to approve abstract 20 as read?
Motion.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, fire department equipment request. Can I have a motion and a second for the purchase and replacement of fire gloves, face pieces for self-contained breathing apparatuses, and rescue gear in the amount of $6,144? I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of written application fee, request was received to return application fees for two solar permit applications. Building Inspector Pennella has recommended this request be granted less than administration fee. So can I have a motion and a second to refund the application submitted by Keisha Johnson of $239 and Claude Legger of $143?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, we're losing somebody from our extended family. Can I have a motion and a second to accept the resignation of MEO Dennis Kipple from the Highway Department effective April 5, 2024?
All motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so on behalf of the board, I want to wish, I want to thank Dennis for his many years of dedicated service to our community, and wish him happiness in his future endeavors. We have a budget modification, as discussed during the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget work session, the building department would like to upgrade the Amnistity V program to import all state and local codes. Trustee Suriello has requested this module be purchased now, since the program will need time for implementation. In addition, the department would like to purchase three printers for their vehicles so violations can be issued on site. The current budget has sufficient funds to cover this expense. So, can I have a motion and a second to approve a modification as recommended by treasurer Podvin to the 2023, 2024 budget to the building department by decreasing A3620.200 equipment by $4,640 and increasing A3620.413 amnistity maintenance by $4,640? And that was a mouthful.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, closing of escrow, return of balance, zone change application. So in December, the village board approved the local law adding restaurants usage to the CR district. The applicant is looking for a closing of said escrow and the return of all unused monies. So can I have a motion and a second to approve the closure of the escrow for JT923 LLC in the amount of $4,578.62 that was posted for an application requesting a zone change?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Old business, so back in December, the village board approved the contract with National Water Main Cleaning Company for
Could I give you clarification, there's also said a zone change application, I didn't see anything on the memorandum on that.
It just may be the way I read it out loud, it's CR district, it was local law.
They, yeah, they submitted a petition and the board took it up as a local law.
Okay, back in December, the village board approved the contract with National Water Main Cleaning Company for the cleaning and televising of sanitary sewers. Change order one represents a credit of $25,697.41. Can I have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign change order one for cleaning and televising of sanitary sewers?
Still moved.
All in favor?
The question?
Yep.
The document also says 2023, not 2024, I guess another typo on the document here for the contract?
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, new business, delinquent water bills, consolidated water fund. So, can I have a motion and a second to approve the following resolution as presented on our website for the re-levy, or the levy, I should say, of 827 delinquent water bills from the consolidated water fund that totals $294,486.25? A complete list is on file in the village clerk's office. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Can I have a second? Seconded by trustee Forelli? Go ahead.
This one refers to imposing liens, we don't, this is the county doing the cost of imposing liens, I assume.
What's the question?
The question is, does this resolution require legal services to impose a lien, or is it done by the county?
Village treasurer?
Neither.
This refers to liens and the
This is not a lien, this is a re-levy for unpaid water, is that what you're on right now?
Yes, levy.
So whatever water bills were not paid, we have to adopt this resolution, and then the county on the village tax bill has a line item that says unpaid water. Same with the next two resolutions for previously exempt properties and property maintenance. It's not a lien, and it's not done by the county, it's done by us.
I'm looking at the resolution which says liens by the county.
I do not know that, I don't know what that means.
So it's not a legal lien, like I'm not drafting any specific documents, but when a property doesn't pay it, it becomes part of their next year's tax?
Through the county.
No, the county prints the bills for us.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But we don't have to pay them to print the bills for us, we can print our own bills, it's just cheaper for them to do that.
No, I understand, I just want to make sure that we're not investing in actually filing liens.
Zero investment.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, village clerk McLennan, will you please conduct a roll call?
Trustee Fryban?
Aye.
Trustee Forelli? Trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we've got one more for Water Six Fund, Am Door Park. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the following resolution as presented on our website for the levy of 22 delinquent water bills from the Water Six Fund, Am Door Park, that totals $4,455.21? A complete list is once again on file in the village clerk's office. I'll make the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All right, roll call, village clerk McLennan?
Trustee Fryban?
Aye.
Trustee Forelli? Trustee Suriello?
Aye.
Trustee Fabro?
Aye.
Mayor Jacob Mazza?
Aye. Okay, I got another one. All right, can I have a motion and a second to adopt the following resolution as presented to re-levy a prorated tax amount due on properties located at various locations that were previously eligible for an exemption?
Motion.
Question?
Yes.
It was my understanding that the assessor does this automatically. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, re-levy of property maintenance violations. So can I have a motion and a second to adopt the following resolution as presented to re-levy an amount incurred at 132 Ridge Road that was issued a violation pursuant to village clerk, no, village code chapter 240, property maintenance? Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor Jacob Mazza, just so I can clarify Mr. Fryban's answer, because I didn't have my microphone on, you stated that the county does that automatically, they do for county and town taxes, but since the village is an independent entity from the county, the village has to do their own.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have a moratorium waiver request for Rushmore Estates. So can I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on April 25, 2024 at 7:30 PM to entertain public comments on a petition received from 14 Castleton Drive for an exemption from the moratorium requesting a waiver of local law 11 of 2023 building moratorium?
Second.
All in favor?
Question?
Yes.
Aren't they already connected?
No, they weren't part of the initial, they were not part of the moratorium waiver initial, like, they weren't approved prior to that, so they are
They said they're unapproved for a single-family house and a bed and breakfast, they're going for an improvement, so that doesn't include, this is an additional use on top of that, so that hasn't been considered in your moratorium when you issue it. So they have to either demonstrate that they're exempt or get a moratorium from this board or to get the approval for the event anyway.
I have a motion and a second, do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Schedule public hearing, water billing schedule, can I have a motion and a second to introduce introductory local law four of 2024, which will amend chapter 298 of the code of the village of Woodbury to amend the billing schedule for water bills? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Could we, would you discuss that for a second?
Sure.
If you've, as you increase the number of months in each billing, but you don't change the bracket for the water, doesn't that increase the bills for, potentially increase the bills for residents, since they could be moved into the next bracket of water rates?
We're changing from quarterly to triannual.
Right, you were, it was quarterly before.
No, it wasn't. So we're moving it to triannual billing, which will save the taxpayers of Woodbury approximately about six grand. All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All right, can I have a motion and a second to refer introductory local law four of 2024, the village of Woodbury Water Department and the village treasurer for comments?
Motion.
All in favor? All right, can I have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to entertain public comments on introductory local law four of 2024 to be held on April 25, 2024 at 7:30 PM? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Schedule interviews for upcoming vacancies on the planning and zoning board. So what I'd like to do is schedule these prior to our meeting on the 25th at 6:30 PM. So can I have a motion and a second to schedule a special meeting to be held on April 25 at 6:30 PM to schedule interviews for candidates who submitted letters of interest to serve on the planning and zoning board of appeals?
Still moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All right. All right, finally. Authorize mayor to sign Rushmore Estates Consent Order. So, as I mentioned earlier during Maria's question, past history, prior village boards approved the creation of an event venue law to allow for the Rushmore Estates to operate as such. Those boards also approved two consent agreements to allow for the operation as they move through the planning board process. Representatives for Rushmore Estates have requested a third consent agreement that I am happy to oblige. Before I go any further- Before I go any further, I just want to thank trustee Sariello for her due diligence on this matter. So, all that being said, can I have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a consent agreement, number three, for Castleton Drive LLC Rushmore Estates permitting eight specific events to occur while the applicant obtains the needed approvals, permits as an event venue?
So moved.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Furelli, second by trustee Sariello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All righty. Regular business is done. We move into public comments, our favorite part of the program. So, public comment. Anything you wish to discuss, we'll start in the back of the room, because Jimmy likes to go last. I'm trying to oblige Jimmy. Thank you, buddy. Anyone wishing to speak about anything? Goldfish dying? The Hindenburg disaster? Nothing? Jimmy, I guess you're up. I know you were planning on speaking, right? I just wasn't throwing that out there?
It's been a while. Jimmy Ng, Highland Mills. So let me start. Number one, thank you for Rushmore Estates. You know, as a resident of Brigadoon, I want to see, I want to see, you know, them to be a viable business venue, doing what they do. And let's see, we're finally there. Since I've been here, it's two years, there's a lot of bickering, you know what, I've been part of it and... But the whole thing is, for me, I realize how important this area is as an area. Matt, I believe you're involved in the Clovewood issue?
I commented at the last meeting, yeah, that we were all in favor of putting forward the board.
They had that DEC hearing. Before that, let me, is he here? Is BJ here? BJ Mendelson. While some of us aren't always going to agree to his reporting, I have to thank BJ for drawing this issue out. I listened in on that first session on April third. And that's scary. I missed the second session. I couldn't handle another dose of it. But I left there, forget about the issues, or what's going on. It was just a reminder that you guys sitting there, Sandra, you and the rest of the town, all these boards, everyone else, what you do is so important to an area. Because if you are not our gatekeepers, it's almost, is South Blooming Grove too late? Is Clovewood too late? The horror stories that I'm hearing from the residents, I don't want to see that in Woodbury. I don't want to see that anywhere. But are we going to get into bickering issue as far as whether it's this person, that person, this party against that party, this agenda, whatever? I don't know, I don't know what happened there. All I know is catchy upon history. Board went out, something's got approved, this project got approved. And we're not talking about somebody's, a family member, family friend starting a project. The individuals that started this project had a history. They had an agenda. And now, if I am not mistaken, Blooming Grove is north of us. South Blooming Grove is, if we're flat on the map, they are west and north of us, right? And basically, what happens over there is going to affect us one way or another. I mean, it's... But you know, with that, I see that one big project. The whole thing is, you know what? Your decisions here as a board, maybe not in that scale, not six-hundred homes, twelve-hundred apartments, whatever it is, but on a smaller scale, one thing, they keep adding up, adding up, adding up. And as a whole, I know CJ and Tyron, they're on the board, their big thing was water and compensation, and I thank them for that. But can I count on a board that is for the preservation and the conservation of this area? Not just the water. You know, Mayor, what area is it that was flooding out every time you had the rain?
We have various areas.
Bailey Farm Road, is that where we're talking about? Bailey Farm Road?
The trailer park is flooding. I know.
But it's those, it's all these projects that, we can't handle it. This area can't handle it. You know, I've told this story before. I moved three lousy bushes on my lawn. At the end of tonight's rain, tomorrow's rain, I have a mud puddle because the water just runs. It trickles down. That's just the way it is. Okay? One oh five is a mess right now. Okay? Every time there's a project, I cringe. I'm terrified of what's going to happen. You know, luckily, you know, Vic, you know where I am. I'm on top of the hill. It really doesn't matter to me. But I hear the stories. It's the mud, the silt, it's like all these developments. It's like, I know you got the moratorium. The moratorium may never end because of this water situation. But I'm scared when it does. What happens? You know, you put in, I believe there's another project on thirty-two senior housing. How is that, what happens when they start building there? They start clearing? What happens? I mean, can we, okay, they start breaking ground and hold on, timeout, this isn't working? I mean, I don't know. What is the answer?
So Kelly has actually met with the planning board and the applicant, and they've drawn up an agreement to manage runoff and stormwater and things like that. And they're going to go through the county to ensure they have enough water and various other, you know, pre-checks that the project's going to, you know, go through and meet all the requirements.
Over here, you know, I speak to a lot of long-time, you know, long-time residents that grown up here. And they're telling me the changes over a period of time. I don't know what it is. But when these residents are all fearful, forget about who's moving or whatever else, but just the changes. I remember, what was it? Maria, what flood was that, where you showed the river going past your house? Exactly, okay? But was it like that ten years ago? Was it like that? Has it always been like that? It's getting worse every year. And the whole thing is, who's the policeman that's going to tell us, stop? Who's the guy that's going to say, because it's application by application to the zoning board or everything else, I believe. You're never looking at as a whole. But it's not one project that's going to overflow an area. It's the cumulative effect. But the whole thing is, who's going to say, stop? I mean, that's my issue. I mean, April third scared me. I would hate to look up and all of a sudden, you know what? A few board members change. Your issues are different. Your priorities are different. And next thing you know, we are the next version of South Blooming Grove. Because when that time comes, you know, you're going to kill the area. You know what? Everyone's thinking, you sell homes to the people that want to move off from the city? Well, who wants a home that's flooded out? Who wants, you know, who wants to live in an area that's no longer beautiful? I moved here for that reason. Now everything gets overdeveloped, overdeveloped. You know, my issue is really, who's overseeing this as an area? You know, I see, you know what, there's different boards, but there's just nobody, there's not the president of Woodbury. And maybe it is instead of a meeting here, we got a town meeting next week. Do all the boards sit down together in one big room and speak together? As far as, hey, this is what we see, what do you see? You know, without the bickering, without everything else.
If I may respond, Jimmy. That type of long-term planning that you're thinking about is really something that happens in the comprehensive plan of the village. And I believe the last update to that was done, I want to say twenty-nineteen. And that was originally drafted in two thousand and eight, I think. So there's, the idea is, with each project that comes through, the planning board, all these, us, the board of trustees, the town, everybody is kind of checking back to that guiding document and ideally making choices that are in line with that document when approving or not approving projects. So if you haven't seen the comprehensive plan, it's on the village website. I would highly recommend you check it out. A lot of information in there. It's about three hundred pages long, but it could answer some of your questions, maybe.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, James. Anyone else? You got it. You have to. It's written in the bylaws that you need to speak in a meeting, Maria.
I'm putting on my secretary hat for the Woodbury chamber. I know everyone's been busy, but maybe come June or July, the board, building department, myself and another member, maybe the attorney, we can come up with a, re-look at the sign law. I am constantly getting businesses within the village who know me, know my husband, and they're feeling some parts of the sign law not being fair to everybody. So as a chamber member, this has been going on for at least four or five years, and we've asked to look at the law and see where we can change. I know a submission was given when Mr. Thomasberger was here with some proposals for the zoning particulars for the signs. So I'm giving Kelly three months' notice to maybe come up with something to...
Maria, you know I love local laws. There's nothing I like doing more than making up local laws.
I know, local laws, but this is something that... What signs? It's just that there's some businesses that are approaching myself and, like I said, my husband. And they see things that are being done towards them and not being done towards others, and why is this being done? I said, I know the village is working on it to come together. So I'm coming forward as a resident, chamber secretary, and an advocate for other business owners who have asked me this question. So that's why I said maybe June, July, when things settle down. Thank you.
Maria, I think I have someplace, the comments from Chabelli and I think Frank Collins that they had put together a few years back. Okay. Maybe we start there, me and Mike. We get a couple of calls, espresso. Some Danish. There you go. And then we sit down with the chamber and we get, we put something together, so that's fine. As long as we get the Danish on there. Anything but prune. Those are Vic's, those are for Vic. I saved those for Vic for us. Maria, do you have an update on the parade? Do you have an update on the parade? Maria, my, come on.
My other hat, the parade, the Woodbury Memorial Day Parade is on Sunday, May twenty-sixth. I tried to put it on the website this morning, but I noticed there was an error in the date. So I'll put it back on. We did create an email now, so it doesn't go to my personal or to the business, so that, we're getting there. There's a few people that owe me some ads. And I'm trying to get the book together, and I'm working on the grand marshal. So, yeah, I'm having a little difficulty with that one, with the person who doesn't feel that he's worthy of it, so I'm working on that. Everyone knows, I forgot what it's called, the Sullivan. When men were called to war, if you were the only male adult in a family, I think it was called the Sullivan Law. I'm trying to remember. So you didn't go to active action. You went someplace else. You went to, this person was not active, actively fighting for the country because he was the only male in the family. And, but he did go to England. He did serve for several years. He was helping, doing what he was supposed to do for the government. We're trying to convince him. He did serve, in my heart. He served, and he wears that hat. He's always at the same place where it needs to go for veterans, so I have to convince him some more. So that's where I am with... Right. He didn't go into active duty. Right, right. I think it's called the Sullivan Law. I can't remember what the law was that... Was it the Sullivan Law? Thank you. So that's where I am with the... I think so, too. Yes. Anything else before I sit down, Vic?
No, I can finish it. I'll let you go.
Oh, thank you, Rob, for your work.
Okay, anyone else in the public wishing to speak? No? No? All right, we go out to the department heads for comments. We got a full boat here tonight, so I'll start with the ladies. Village treasurer, Podvin, I was actually thinking of Mickey when I said ladies. I'll go out to you.
I just want to acknowledge and thank all the department heads that prepared their budgets and justified the dollar amounts that they submitted. We had a very long budget work session, and the board members participated and was able to ask questions on the items that were budgeted, and the justification was there. As the public may or may not know, excuse me, when we do a budget, we start at zero, oh, relax. We start at zero and work our way up. We don't just put a number in that was there previously. We justify every penny. And the budget is a lot of work, and it's great that it was adopted. It's sad that it was high, but hopefully next year it won't be. And, you know, when it comes to capital planning, I agree for certain things that it's a great idea to do, especially when they're large-ticket items. Because then you don't want to, but for smaller items, you don't want to incur the interest to make it cost a lot more than it was. But if that's something the board wants to entertain, I can obtain the literature from the comptroller with regards to capital planning. So you all have the opportunity to review it. They do have literature on that. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, Desiree, once again, not just to you, but all the department heads, but really you, because this is you. Every year, we go through this. This is a lot of work putting these budgets together, okay? She spends a lot of time on this and not always gets the credit she so rightfully deserves. So I just want to give her kudos for once again putting the budget together. Once again, under your watch, the village of Woodbury had the Tom Donapoli state comptroller's highest stress rating, which was good news, okay, once again, for eight straight years. And the only consistent with that has been village treasurer, Podvin, so I thank you, okay? Moving right along, Mickey Phillips, who's half asleep, didn't realize I called him out for being... Anyway, go ahead, Mickey. What do you got? Okay, you have water shutdown going on, or water flushing of hydrants going on Monday.
I agree with Star flush on Monday night, yes.
Yeah, so anything you want to, just let the residents know, groundwater, anything like that?
They should be fine by the morning.
Okay. So Mr. Positivity, he's a man of very few words, Mickey Phillips. Mike Pinella, my second Michael. Go ahead. Anything? Okay. Rob Wyatt?
Yeah, just one thing. April twentieth, we'll be having our thirteenth annual cleanup day. It'll begin at eight-thirty AM at the highway garage, and it'll end with a lunch also at the highway garage. So please come out and join us. Turnout's been low the last couple of years, so I'd like to see everyone get out and get involved in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Kelly, anything? Jessica? Nada? All right, moving on to board comments, starting at the far end with trustee Fryban.
I want to echo the comments on the job that was done on the budget. Department heads really did put together the numbers. I think our problems have to do with the way we approach budgeting, not with the way the department heads are managing the departments.
way we approach budgeting, not with the way the department heads are managing the departments. And I also really, you know, want to comment on the, um, efforts that have been made. I know we've had comments about what's happening surround, in surrounding communities and so forth. Uh, I experienced that this morning when gridlock struck on 105, it went through the Village of KJ because the, their road design and, and their lighting system and stop sign arrangements basically create gridlock, and it totally blocks the intersection all the way back over Route 17. It was, I've never seen it that bad, and I suspect it's going to get worse. As, as, as are conditions along there, because the grading, as you pointed out, is doing a lot of damage in terms of drainage along there. But it's a different way they approach development than I think most of the rest of the county. And I think the answer is that the way we preserve the community is by actually adhering to the master plan and the zoning and paying attention to each development and the engineering that's involved. Thank you.
Trustee Vic Burelli?
Rob, you stole some of my time. I was going to bring that up. But what you didn't steal from me is there's an upcoming blood drive. And everybody, we all know that there's major blood shortages in the area.
Mike. Mike.
Thank you.
Go for it.
Hello?
There you go, Vic. There you go. Congratulations.
So getting back, there is a blood drive coming up on April 27th. It will be held right here from nine to one, I believe. Uh, there's major blood shortages in Hudson Valley, all over New York State, but in particular in Hudson Valley. So if you can and you are able, please come out and donate blood. It would be, um, a great thing to do for people that are in need. Um, and that's really all I have after this.
Thanks, Vic, all that. Uh, Sue Suriello, trustee Suriello?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay, that brings it to me. Uh, thank you, everybody, for attending our meeting. I appreciate seeing an audience. Um, I'd like to, is it, oh, it is green. Am I close enough? Now better? There we go. I'll take it out too. A lot of mic trouble tonight. Um, I want to remind you all once again, please turn it out to Rob's cleanup with the highway department. We'd greatly appreciate that, having a few folks out there to help us. And I have a couple of different announcements for different events around the community coming up. We have the Woodbury Repair Cafe first, that's going to be April 13th, uh, this Saturday, 10 AM to 2 PM at Village Hall, right in this room. We're going to be fixing, you know, whatever you bring us, clothing, tech, uh, warding objects, electrical things like lamps, maybe cell phones. I don't know if we're getting that advanced. Um, and we're also doing a bike collection for used bicycles to try and recycle them and then give them also to, uh, I believe it's, we have Back in Game Sports is helping us with that, and they're helping to recycle the bicycles. And then we have Woodbury, the Woodbury Climate Smart Community is also hosting Arbor Day Celebration on, uh, April 27th in conjunction with the village, town, the Parks Department and the Public Library. And the time of that is going to be 9 AM to 11 on April 27th. And at 10 AM, we're going to be doing a New York State native tree planting. And also on April 28th, pardon, sorry, that was the 27th, this is the Sunday after the 28th, from 12 PM to four, the Woodbury Historical Society is going to be holding an event titled 50 Items That Tell the Story of Southeastern Orange County, and that's going to be at the Woodbury Senior Center. And that's, I believe, well, and I'd like to, uh, thank everybody for their work on the budget and, uh, also the work with our engineers on the letter concerning the clove wood development. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you, trustee Fabro. Okay, since our next meeting will be April 25th, Administrative Professionals Day is the 24th. So I'm going to do my board comments on the lovely women that keep the village running, period. So what does a cream filling Oreo cookie have in common with administrative professionals? Everything. Without the cream, there's no magic center that holds it all together. You're left with two chocolate disks that sit there waiting for something special to happen. And administrative professionals are that special ingredient. And let's be honest, it's all about the cream. Okay? Unfortunately, too often, administrative professionals discount or downplay the incredible amount of wisdom and skills and abilities that they bring to the table. Oh, sure, they may joke that their favorite mayor, Mike Queenen, or their favorite trustee, Tom Flood, couldn't live without them. But when it comes to stepping up to the plate and claiming their greatness, that's often another story. So tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to thank all our administrative professionals, to Jessica and Claudia and Maria and Jen, Melissa and Beth, Sheila, and of course, Village Treasurer, Podvin. Thank you for making multitasking look easy and the impossible look like a piece of cake. So as a gift to my, all my clerks, I will not be visiting Village Hall that day. So you don't, so you don't have to be stuck with me entertaining you. So, like any work gets done when I enter the hall, which is basically every day. So, with no further comments or business, or with no further business to discuss or comments received, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn this meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, just remember, Chuck Norris doesn't use spell check. If he happens to misspell a word, Oxford will change the spelling. I plan on peppering our meetings with Chuck Norrisisms, every meeting. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. I've got hundreds of them.